...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And first off?
Here.
Vice Chair Poppa Holson?
Yeah.
Secretary Siena?
Here.
Carolyn Pindalora? Marcy Newfrie?
Yeah, Carolyn's here, she just walked in.
Mayim Baal?
Here. Okay, and there's only one item of agenda on tonight's special meeting, and that is Mr. Tom Hennig, and he's from the state's Freedom of Information Office, and I believe you're the Public Education...
That would be me.
...guru. So we'll turn it over to you.
It's getting too crazy, right? So, uh, I am indeed the Public Education Officer, and I thank you for inviting us to come down and do this. We do these sessions all over the state, and it's really, uh, sort of encouraging to us when people call and ask, because it means you're trying to find out how to do things the right way. So, I applaud you for that. We, we try not to make it, um, or at least when I do them, you know, we're not beating you up. The idea is not to make you miserable, it's not to have you go like this, "Oh my God, we don't do it that way." I'm not, we're not here to, you know, file complaints or anything. The idea is to help, is to try to teach, is to try to give you the tools to work with so that freedom of information becomes second nature, and that you can go about the business of educating the kids in North Branford. It comes with the territory, it is the law in the state of Connecticut, uh, and it's something you need to know, and the more you know about how to work with it, the more at ease you are with it, the better off you'll be. I always tell people a little bit about me before I start, I'm not an attorney, I don't know if that's good news or bad news, I don't know. But the reason I share that with you is I'm not going to give you any binding legal opinions. Again, I'm not here to give you orders or commands, it's opinions. I am in my 17th year at the FOI Commission. It'll be, uh, it'll be 17 full years, uh, January 2nd, and it's based on what I've seen, what I've seen our commission do, what I've studied, what I've learned, uh, and again, but it's not, it's not an order, it's advice based on, on my best, my best knowledge. Now, in interest of full disclosure, before I joined FOI, I was a journalist, and I often ask if that's good news or bad news. I don't know how you feel about that, but the reason I share that is that I've kind of seen FOI from, from different angles. Uh, you know, at one point, I spent a lot of time on the phone answering questions from people. By the way, I'll say this several times, if you ever have an issue or question, do not hesitate to pick up the phone and call, that's what we're there for. I would rather you call beforehand to avoid a problem than, than to step into the middle of something. Some people say, "Oh, well, I've been bothering you," or it's a question stupid, no question is stupid. As you'll see, there are parts of this law that are very confusing, and you probably, some of you are probably going to see that already. You try to do the right thing and you wind up going down the wrong road. So, you know, I'm sitting there answering, and people will ask questions, and, and I can sense what's coming, because at one point I might have been the one forcing the, the question to be asked on, on the other side, so. And the other thing, I don't know if any of you know this, but, uh, a lot of times when I go out and do these sessions, people say, "Well, Tom, you don't get it, we're volunteers." We didn't sign up for this FOI stuff, we signed up to help the community, we signed up to, you know, and we, we go to our jobs, we work all day, and then we come to the board meeting, and, and it's, sometimes it's like a second full-time job, especially around budget season, right? And, well, I get that too. I was, uh, 10 years I was on a Board of Education, was a chairman for the last five in the next town over, up in Durham, so, um, I get that too. I understand what it's like, and I know some of the ins and outs from that aspect as well. So, I get it, I feel your pain, but you still have to understand that it's the law in the state of Connecticut, and it's, it's a law that's been around for 42 years. It was Ello Grasso's brainchild when she ran for governor for the first time. If you do the math, 42 years ago puts us right smack in the middle of Watergate. So you've got a country that was really on edge, a country that was concerned about government behind closed doors, secret government, things being done so that the people didn't know what was going on, and the reality is that democracy only works when people know what's going on. So when, when Ello Grasso was contemplating this run for governor, she said, "I'm, I'm thinking about it," this was, you know, somewhere in 1974, and she said, "One of the things we're gonna do if I'm elected is we're gonna create an open government law. We're gonna make sure that we get this kind of a law in the state of Connecticut." So as you know, she ran in 1974, she became the first woman ever to be elected a governor in her own right, not taking over for a deceased or husband, and, uh, one of the first things she did was put forward the, the concept for this law. And she said, "We're gonna get this law because it's really important." Now remember, the mood of the country was such that there was a lot of momentum behind these kinds of laws, and we were just talking about it, there's, there are laws in all the different states, we're just talking about Connecticut. You know, if you wander into another state and start talking FOI, there could be completely different, uh, completely different paradigm, but for Connecticut, so she put it forward, and then she did something that I find really interesting. She said, "This law is so important that I will see to it that it is passed unanimously by our legislature." Now think about that for a second. Have you watched the legislature even the last six months, waiting for your budget numbers, right? They, they, never mind unanimous, it's, it's hard to get together. Well, she guaranteed unanimity, and she got it. I have seen a video of the vote, there wasn't a single no vote in the Senate, not a single no vote in the House. She signed the law with great flourish, she said, "This is such a pleasure," and the law went into effect. Now, other than being interesting, I always contend that, you know, to get there, if you know the political process at all, and I suspect you all are at least familiar, had to require a lot of discussion, a lot of arm twisting, a lot of back and forth, a lot of, you know, "Well, I like this and I don't like that." So you've got a law that's based on a really simple, easy concept, open up government, public agencies transparent, open to the public. But when you read it, when you try to figure it out, sometimes it takes you through this labyrinth, you're back and forth, and you're, uh, some of you tried to read it, tried to figure it out, I suspect, a lot of gray areas too, which means that those of you who are on the front line, as I, you know, am sometimes, you gotta make a call, you've gotta be able to interpret this law sometimes on the fly. And to do that, you've gotta have some idea what some of these sort of little nuggets are, and you've gotta have the tools to work with, which brings us back to why we're here tonight. But it also, you know, sort of emphasizes the point that it, it's not easy to understand. And, and sometimes you're gonna be sitting there, and you're gonna make a call, and you're saying, "I know, I listened, went to the class, I read the law, this is what I think we're gonna do," and somebody on the other side of the issue's gonna disagree. And they're gonna file a complaint, because they're interpreting the law differently than you have. But first of all, when that happens, I, I hope it doesn't happen very often, but if it happens, don't automatically assume that you've messed up, because it, all it means is that their interpretation differs from yours. And, and if you've done things the right way, even if they haul you up to Hartford for a hearing, you make your case, and, and I'm gonna argue that if you've, if you've thought about it and done things properly, that you, that you'll win in front of the commission, and that your interpretation will be upheld. But it, it does happen, even if you think you're doing everything 100% the way you're supposed to, people are gonna file complaints. Again, the, the goal tonight is to minimize the number that you have to deal with, but it's, it's, you know, it can happen, especially if you're in a situation where you've got a contentious issue, it, it clearly could happen. So, the, the law is called Freedom of Information, and one of the first things I tell people, it's not really about free information, it's about access to two basic things, to public meetings and to public records, and I'll, and I'll go into both pieces in a second. But a lot of people see Freedom of Information, and they assume that that's an, I, an invitation to start asking questions. I says, I, I turn to you when I say that, do people come in your office and say, "You know what, on this Freedom of Information thing, you gotta tell me this, you gotta tell me that. How did you arrive at that budget figure? How did you get there?" But, well, you know, we're all public servants, we're gonna answer questions if we can, to a certain extent, but not because of Freedom of Information, because one of the first lessons we should learn is that FOI does not require anybody to answer a question. A lot of people say, "You know, under FOI, I need to know, I need to..." Well, the public needs to do some of the work, it's, it's not a one-way street, they have to go to the meeting where the issue's being discussed, where they have to get access to the records where the information is contained. What makes it difficult, of course, is that we, as I said, we are public servants, and we try to answer questions, but at some point, you know, you have to draw a line, you may be uncomfortable trying to explain how something was interpreted by a school board or by a... And you say, "Look, you got, you just gotta go and look at the record and see exactly, exactly what was there." Have you had a couple of those perhaps over?
Usually not in the office, it's everywhere else outside the office.
Yes. So, if that's been a problem, where you think, "Oh my goodness," I want you to have a little sympathy for the people working at the Freedom of Information Commission, because people see our name, and they think that we're the answer service for the entire state of Connecticut. They think that we can produce anything at any time. One of the things that happens fair, often, almost daily, is that people call up, they have this vision of us sitting in this giant vault, with every record held by every agency in the state of Connecticut, and they say, "Can you send me this? Can you send me that?" And they'll push a button, and out it comes, and that's, they, that's not what happens. That's, the FOI Commission was established so that when people believe they've been denied that access, they file complaints, and our commission ultimately adjudicates those and decides, you know, who's, who's done correctly and, and what should, what should happen down the road. And I told you, I answered a lot of questions on the phone, I answered emails, a lot of times friends say to me, "You know, you should stop doing the FOI thing, you should go out and do an hour or so of stand-up," because some of this stuff, some of this stuff is just, you know, people think that we're something that we're not. For example, last month, "Dear sir, please provide me an electronic copy via email, preferably a spreadsheet, showing all the Medicaid-paid electroconvulsive treatments, AKA ECT, AKA shock treatment. My request includes every field you have available, but certainly not patient identifiers. The request includes, but is not limited to, the name of the psychiatrist, license number, date of treatment, age of patient, city, county, name of treatment facility, address of facility, cost of treatment, et cetera, timeframe, as far back as your computer records exist. Best regards, Ken Kramer, PsychSearch.net." Okay, PsychSearch.net, well, first of all, I, I have no idea what that is, and second of all, I wouldn't even know what, do those records exist? You know what I mean? So, you get something like that, and we try to be polite, we write back, and I, you know, again, that's my job, and I say, you know, I have a sort of a standard line, we're not a repository for records, if you want those records, you have to, you have to send the request to whatever agency has it. And usually I get, "Oh, thank you very much," but I, I share this with you just so, again, we feel your pain, this return email comes, well then, be a good public servant and get it into the correct hands instead of just blowing it off. Best regards, Ken Kramer, PsychSearch.net." So, you know, you can't win for trying sometimes, right? The phone call that came in the other day, "Can, can you give me directions to the Capitol?" Oh, yeah, you know, you know, yeah, I couldn't probably, you know, it's right across the street. You got the, one, one, one more. See, I told you, stand-up would work. One more, this came in this summer, and I just sort of shook my head, and I said, "What are we supposed to do with this? Coming to the FOI Commission is the following. Hi, the 1108 Whitney Avenue has a big board in the middle of the pavement, makes concern about possible risk of injury for both traffic or pedestrian. Please help to remove the board immediately because of heavy traffic, we cannot move, thanks." I guess that means, um, as Freedom of Information, I'm supposed to get in the car and drive down and move the board so that the traffic can... So, you think you got 'em, we got 'em. But lesson number one, especially if you have people who are constantly coming in and asking questions, is, that's not what we're about. It's about access to meetings and access to records, and I'm gonna go through both of them. Folks, this works best if you ask questions as we go along, I may hit on something that you, that you don't do, and you're saying, "Uh-oh, don't worry, there's no, there's no penalties or anything here," or you want further explanation, just stop and ask the questions, and that's, that works best. So, when we talk about meetings, here's the definition, I'll read it. Meeting means any hearing or other proceeding of a public agency, any convening or assembly of a quorum of a multi-member public agency, and any communication by or to a quorum of a multi-member public agency, whether in person or by means of electronic equipment, to discuss or act upon a matter over which the public agency has supervision, control, jurisdiction, or advisory power. My advice is, anytime you gather in any way, shape, or form to do your work, the work of the Board of Education, consider the meeting. Make sure it's properly noticed, make sure it's open to the public, and make sure there are minutes when the meeting is done. A lot of times people who do, you know, what you're doing now, what I used to do, "Oh, and by the way, I was asked to serve on another board," and they said, "Yes." But anyway, you know, so, so what I am going to be doing again, well, it's budget season, we're gonna do workshops. It's not really a meeting, well, it doesn't really matter what you call it, budget is something really important to your task here, you could call it a budget workshop, but it's still a meeting in the eyes of this law, and you need to notice it. Well, we're just gonna get together for dinner and talk about a few things. Well, you can get together for dinner, but you don't wanna be talking about things that have to do with board business. It's, it's, you know, some of you may be friends, and we'll get into that in a little bit, um, it's, it's hard, but you have to understand that the focus, the reason for this law is you've gotta do your work in, in public. We're gonna form a little subcommittee, does your board do a lot of work through subcommittees? Mine did, my Board of Ed did, you know, we have curriculum, we have transportation, we have finance. Subcommittee's not the full board, so, hey, we're in business, no FOI. The law talks about public agencies, I'm not gonna read you that definition, it's really long, but in that definition is a phrase that says, "Including any committee of or created by..." So if you create a committee, it becomes a public agency too, and needs to follow the same rules.
So even if it's not voting in that committee, any of the minutes information taken is...
Correct, correct. You heard the word "quorum" when I read the definition. A lot of people say, "Well, here's what we're gonna do, we're gonna get around it by just having a couple of us, and it won't be a quorum, it's not a meeting." Now, I don't have a clear answer on that one for you, but don't shoot the messenger. Even absent a quorum, the law says that you could be having a meeting.
Okay, so I have a question then. Tonight, the vice chair and I met with the superintendent, is that a meeting?
Um, it depends the depth to which you, you went, I mean, someone could make that claim, but...
Even though there's not a quorum?
That's correct. If you're talking about agenda items and just sort of general stuff, you could probably say no, but if you're digging deep into, into subjects that should be public, you'd probably wanna be careful about that. The quorum issue is one that's frustrating to, to all of us. The, the quorum issue, there is an appellate court ruling that says, even if you don't have a quorum, if you don't have a quorum, it's not a meeting under FOI. There's an appellate court ruling that says that. There's also an appellate court ruling that says, if you don't have a quorum, you're still having a meeting under FOI. I can't make this up. So you've got the appellate court of Connecticut telling us the opposite things. So because this other ruling is out there saying, even absent a quorum, it could be a meeting, when people ask the question that Sarah just asked, I have to give them an honest answer, I say, "You wanna be careful about that, because the law says even absent a quorum, it could be a meeting." Now, you would think that somewhere along the line, someone would say, "We need a decision on this." Well, we did, and it went to the Supreme Court, the Supreme Court actually heard oral arguments, quorum meeting, no meeting, and then after hearing the oral arguments, the Supreme Court of Connecticut said, "You know what? We have improvidently taken this matter up, you guys figure it out." And let both, both appellate court rulings stand, which leaves us sort of in limbo when it comes to that issue. So the, so the caution is, there are situations where even absent a quorum, it could be a meeting.
Well, what if it was just the board chair? What if just the board chair was...
No problem there.
So anytime more than one person?
More than one, because, you know, and again, I don't wanna get crazy about that, but you just wanna be careful with, you know, the, even the appearance of a, of a meeting, you just wanna be careful.
But executive session is exempt from at all?
Well, we'll, we'll talk about executive session, that, that comes, that comes in a little bit, it's part of a meeting, but...
Tom, just, just a spin-off, so if, if two are present, it needs to be posted, it needs to be following our...
Could be, right.
Minutes.
So what would you post?
A staff list, by list?
A, a, you know, the executive subcommittee or something like that. Now, let's not, again, if it's, if it's a quick conversation about what's gonna be on the agenda, or when the meetings are gonna be or something like that, let's not get crazy. But if you're digging into an issue that, that really should be part of an open or an executive session issue, it, it should be noticed. Use judgment, use good judgment.
Because otherwise, how does everybody else know what happened? Is what my question would be, if I was privy to that meeting, how do I trust I know what happened? And, so if it's a meeting, I just wanna be clear, it needed to be posted in minutes following?
Correct, correct.
Are those, that's it? So it needed to be posted in minutes?
And, and, and anybody could come too, unless it's a proper reason for executive session.
So it would, well, but you see, this is a good thing then, because lots of times you'd like to have more people there, but you don't, because you don't wanna have a quorum.
Correct.
So you don't wanna violate FOI, so in, in the future then, we can post...
A board member's...
Well, has that ever happened before with the meetings?
Yeah, the chair or the vice chair talking to you is fine.
Right.
And again, and I don't, I don't, again, I was, I was there, I was on a, you know, I was on a board, so you wanna be, you wanna be careful, but, but don't make yourself nuts, if two of you happen to be in the room and you're having a quick discussion about an agenda item, or, you know, how you wanna proceed with something, "Let's bring this to the full board."
That was with the attorney.
But if you get substantial and you start deliberating, you really wanna make sure that...
That should've been executive session. Right, that should've been covered under executive.
That's good, that's good. So, so, and I'll, I'll give you an example, I'll give you an example about the, about the quorum issue. There's, now, this case could decide it because they've appealed it. In Meriden, they put together, they call it their Executive Committee of the Council, and it's, and it's four council members, which doesn't constitute a quorum, and they were meeting to decide who to put on a search committee for the next town manager. And the Meriden paper filed a complaint and said, "Hey, how come you're not noticing this meeting?" Well, their response was, "It's not a quorum of the board, therefore it's not a meeting." Meriden paper filed a complaint, and our commission found that this was clearly board business, and so even absent a quorum, this was a meeting that should've been noticed and held to the public.
What's the consequence when you...
Well, the, the commission has the ability to declare null and void, things that happen at meetings that are not proper. That's probably the, the, the first time it happens, it'll probably be, "Don't do it again," but if it happened repeatedly, they could declare null and void, they could wipe out a meeting.
Is there ever a fine? I'm sorry, sir.
Yes, there could also be a, a civil penalty of anywhere from $20 to $1,000, and it would be levied against the individuals who violated, not, not against this town or the school board or anything like that, right? We don't, I gotta be honest with you, we don't, our commission doesn't do that very often, we tend to be instructive rather than punitive, but it's, it's out there. Yeah. The, go ahead.
So, can I ask another question? Because I just wanna make sure, if it was information gathering, not necessarily digging deeper, but just getting facts from, let's say, an attorney, is, is that the same thing that should've been done?
Well, you know, again, it depends, it depends on, on what it is.
But it wasn't, when it moved out.
If, if, if the chair and the vice chair go to the superintendent and say, "Can you fill us in on this?", I wouldn't get nuts about that.
Okay.
I wouldn't get nuts about that, so...
That's what...
Yeah. Um, yeah, but so, so be careful on, on the quorum issue, you wanna just, you know, understand that even absent a quorum, it, it could be a meeting. The, the law talks to us about three kinds of meetings, you've probably heard that, a regular meeting, a special meeting, an emergency meeting. You've set your schedule, or you're gonna set your schedule for, for 2018, do you do yours for a school year, or do you do it calendar year? Calendar year. So you make sure that's in, and your regular meeting, that you, we meet on the first and third Tuesday, the second and fourth Wednesday, whatever that is, that's your, that's your regular meeting date. People see special meeting, and they go, "Ooh, special." The only thing special about it is that it's not at your regular place and time. You could do anything you want in a special meeting, here's the difference, first off, both of those have to have agendas. You want your agendas to be as specific as possible, you want the people to be able to pick it up, but the court phraseology is, so that the public is fairly apprised as to what's to happen.
Tonight's meeting example.
Right. So you tell them what it is, it has to be available at least 24 hours in advance, okay? You want one here, you should probably send one to the town clerk as well, although there's, there's a debate as to whether or not boards of education need to send it to the clerk, I would send it to the clerk.
What about, what about the libraries? Because we had a, a request that we post our agendas...
If, if they request it and you wanna do it, it's fine, our law couldn't require that. It's, I mean, you know, you're, you're, again, we're community servants, so if you want to, you can, but there's nothing in our, in our law that we require that. The difference between the regular and the special meeting is that at a regular meeting, should something arise that's not on the agenda, you can vote to add it to the agenda, by a two-thirds vote of those who are present. At a special meeting, you cannot. At a special meeting, you can only talk about what's on that agenda, and that's the fundamental difference between the two. People ask about website postings for agendas, and minutes too, for that matter. The legislature kind of played a game with us on that one too. Back in 2008, they passed a law that said you gotta put all your agendas, all your minutes on your websites. Some towns, especially some of the smaller ones, got, "Oh, we don't, we can't, we have the people, we don't have the," you know, legislature said, "Fine, thanks for your input," and passed the law anyway. And then two years later, it rescinded the law, with, with the exception of the special meeting notice. So in addition to not being able to add anything to the agenda, the special meeting notice must go on the, on the website if you've got availability. Now, today's world, everybody puts everything on there, and don't stop doing it, it's a great idea, but I guess the message there is that if for some reason a regular meeting agenda doesn't get up there, somebody drops the ball, you haven't violated FOI, but if a special meeting does it, technically you violate it.
I have another question. We, we have a very nice website, and we keep, we have the agendas all posted before the meetings.
Great, yeah.
And we have the minutes after the meetings, both unapproved and approved, but we don't leave our agendas there, do we need to leave the agendas there?
Not under FOI, no, no. I mean, they're public records, they're available somewhere, but the, FOI would not require that.
Okay, thank you.
Can you repeat what you said before? I kinda missed it.
Which one?
Right before her question.
About the websites?
No, um...
Special meeting?
Yeah, it was a special meeting right before her question.
The only requirement for website postings under FOI for a municipal agency...
Yeah.
They left that intact for the state, just make it totally confusing, for a municipal agency, is a special meeting agenda. That's the only FOI requirement for, for your board. Obviously, we put more on there because we want people to know what's going on, and frankly, we found out that the more that you put on, the easier it becomes, fewer phone calls, fewer drop-ins, whereas the agenda was, it's, because it's all right there. Now, the, the third kind of meeting, the emergency meeting, folks, is a meeting that I really discourage you from using. It's a nut, it's an unnoticed meeting, and it, and in the end, it usually creates a problem that you don't need. If at all possible, wait 24 hours, it's all it takes to notice a special meeting. Couple reasons, first of all, you know, what you and I think might be an emergency, might not be in the eyes of this law. It sets the bar really high because it wants meetings to be noticed. I cannot tell you, well, I can tell you, holidays like Veterans Day, Columbus Day, and President's Day, the day after one of those, every single time, I will get at least one phone call, just Veterans Day a couple weeks ago. "Hi, Tom, hi, how are you doing?" So Veterans Day was, was celebrated, if you will, or was recognized on Friday the 10th. So the call comes in Monday morning, first call, "Hey, how you doing? I got a problem." "What's the problem?" "We have a regular meeting tonight, Monday night, and we always put the agendas in on Friday, I forgot town hall was closed." So I brought it in this morning, and that's okay, right? Well, no, it's not, because it's not 24 hours, and technically you should wait, "Oh, we have way too much to do, and besides, we have a deadline for something to do on Wednesday, and we can't possibly get everybody together, tonight's the only night we can get together, and we can't possibly get everybody together. Tonight's the only night we can get together, so we're gonna have an emergency meeting." Well, my recommendation was, that's no emergency. Oops, I forgot, it's not an emergency. In our minds, because we have a lot of work to do and because everybody has, you know, pretty tight schedules, I, I understand you might think it so, but the law doesn't, doesn't allow that. Oops, I forgot, not an emergency. My recommendation was to wait. I don't know what they did, and again, if nobody files a complaint, but, but it's hanging over their heads. And you say, "Well, what's the worst that can happen?" And you know, you ask, you ask, you know, what happened? So I'm gonna share a little story with you. It's a, it's true. Over in Ridgefield, the other side of the state, there was a situation, oh, it's a few years ago now, where the assistant fire chief thought he was about to become the new chief. The chief was retiring or moving to another town or something. He got very excited and then he found out that he wasn't. The rumor he was basing all his glee on was false, false rumor. So he, he gets really angry when he thinks about it, you know, "How could they do this to me? I should be the next chief, blah, blah, blah." He marches into the first selectman's office and slams the door and I am told that what followed was a beauty. Screaming, yelling, cursing, stuff getting knocked off desk, blah, blah, blah. Finally, the first selectman, who was known to this guy forever, says, "You're not gonna be the next chief. You can stand there and curse at me all afternoon. You're not gonna be the next chief." I tell you what, we'll make you the interim chief while we look. He's not thrilled, but he's, so he leaves. Well, Ridgefield, like North Branford, like Durham, small town, it didn't take very long. Phone starts ringing off the hook, the emails start coming in, "What happened? I don't know." "This is terrible, this is awful, this is dangerous. He is a threat to you. He is, he was insubordinate, he was unprofessional, all those things." First selectman hears all this and says, "Well, you know, maybe there's something to this." So he decides he's gonna talk to his board. And this is a Friday afternoon. He calls an emergency meeting for the next morning, Saturday morning. He brings the board together. Everybody by then had heard, it was all over town what had happened. And it didn't take them very long. They decide the guy's insubordinate, he's no good. To heck with interim chief, he's fired, he's out. They fire him on the spot. So they all gotta, they all gotta find the guy and tell him. And it's a Saturday and he's not in his office, so they send people out all over town looking for him. They find him on his roof, he's like cleaning his gutters or something like that. They haul him off the roof. He's got the leaves hanging out of his hair, the whole thing. They bring him down to town hall. "Thanks for coming down," they're fired. He gets mad all over again. "You, blankety-blanks, can't fire me because blah, 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 and I therefore, I'm, just quit, I quit." So they reconvene the emergency meeting, they accept his resignation. He thinks about it a little bit, to my point previously. What, what was the emergency? Why couldn't they have waited 24 hours and done this, you know, at least, you know, some, some level of decency? He files a complaint with the FOI commission. This was an improper emergency meeting. Goes to the commission. Now, when we, when a complaint is filed, I don't know if any of you have ever been involved in one, we always try to mediate the complaint. We try to bring the parties together so that you don't have to go to a hearing. But some, as you can imagine, like this one, they can't be mediated. There was just no middle ground, so goes to the hearing. Hearing officer hears all the facts and says, "You know what? This clearly was an attempt to do this without him in the room." And, and the hearing officer said, "They violated the law and I recommend that we declare this meeting null and void." Goes to the full commission after that. The commission reads it, agrees, also declares it null and void. Now, that could be the end of the story. Except because of, you remember I talked about the gray areas and interpretation? We get interpreted too. So if you don't like a decision that the FOI commission gives you, you can appeal it all the way to the state supreme court. And that's what Ridgefield did. They just didn't like the decision. They, they didn't understand or they didn't want to understand. Took it all the way to the supreme court. In January of 2010, the supreme court agreed with the FOI commission. It doesn't always, but in this case it did, and it also declared null and void what had happened at that meeting. The actual incident took place the end of 2007. So think about the, the gap there. And by declaring the meeting null and void, unless they were gonna take it to the US supreme court, you now have a situation where a guy was fired and/or quit at a meeting that basically didn't happen. And you would think, was it really worth it to not wait 24 hours? I would think of, what are the big issues? How much back pay do they have?
I was gonna say.
Back pay, right. And there were, and there was, and there were instances where I'm told that he had a medical issue and he, he might have been covered, but he wasn't covered and, you know, all that stuff. And he was looking for compensation, all that stuff. So I always tell the story, you're, you're looking for a lesson, you're looking for something that, you know, why, why, why risk it? Here's a great example. And I tell it, and then all, two or three years later, I said, "But I think they finally worked something out." And somebody's sitting in the front row laughing at me. I said, "What's so funny?" He says, "Well, I'm from there and they're still fighting about it." They had a two, on top of that, they had a two-year fight over compensation because they couldn't come up with this. And then, and then finally, a year after that, I saw a little article in the Danbury News Times, "Ridgefield settles and they finally paid him." So, an extreme example, yes, but a cautionary tale. This, this law could have consequences that you don't want to deal with. If you ever have an emergency situation. And in fact, the best example I have is, is a school board, several of them. Remember a couple of years ago when our schedules were getting blown to heaven with the snow and the, well, some of them, some of the boards had, had snow problems on the roofs. And they came in one Monday morning and said, "Uh-oh." There was no time to get the, have a full board reading, so they, you know, emergency meeting to allocate, to move funds around, to get a pro up there to get the snow off the roof so that you didn't have a real problem. Keeping people safe, out of harm's way, that's, that's a real emergency. Not, not a, "Oh, we're gonna miss a deadline." Well, you knew what the deadline was, you know, so I don't think that, I don't think that we would allow that as an emergency. Keeping people safe, out of harm's way. If you ever do have an emergency situation, the law says that you have the meeting, you talk only about that emergency situation and within 72 hours, you create a set of minutes that reflect what happened, who was there, and what you did about it. Another cautionary tale. There is a temptation, when you are all together, to say, "Well, gee, as long as we're all here, it's budget season, let's talk about something else," or "Let's talk about somebody's contract." Don't do it. You could only talk about what the emergency situation is. And believe me, I get it, when you're all together, sometimes it's harder to, to do than people would, would think. But stick to the topic, don't, don't wander, else you're, you're asking for trouble.
Can I spin off on what you just said? Recently, our board is looking at policy and we were looking at language for telephonic communication.
Okay.
And have the ability to. If, if you have an emergency situation like that, snow and it's unsafe to travel to bring people in, are you able to do?
Here's what I would do. I would call it an emergency meeting.
Yeah.
When you read the definition, it says whether in person or by means of electronic equipment, so it allows that. But you'd still have to have the emergency meeting. Somebody would have to be here, the emergency meeting in this room, and then you'd get people on speakerphone.
Right.
And so that they could hear everybody else, that they could be identified on the phone, and you could do it that way. And frankly, you're going to Florida next month, right? You still want to come to the meeting? You could participate that way via speakerphone as well. Again, some boards don't like to do that. I'm telling you what the law allows. It allows participation that way.
Okay.
Okay? Sometimes that's a helpful thing to know when you've got a quorum problem. Get somebody who's willing to participate on vacation from, on the phone, you can, you can do it that way. Remember that your meetings are open to the public, anybody can come. I walk down, you know, I drive down 17 from Durham, "No, you're from Durham, you can't come." Anybody, anybody can come. Anybody can audio or videotape a meeting. I don't know if that's ever been a problem here. If, if it had, if it becomes an issue, people running in and out with cameras. You have a right to set parameters. You have a right to run an orderly meeting. You can't ban the cameras or the recording equipment, but you can, you can position them so that you can, you can run your meeting in an orderly fashion. There's a piece of that that I don't like as, as a former chair. There's nothing in the law that says that you have to be told that you're being recorded. So my advice is always just assume that somebody's gotta, you know, the, the law was written for that big old heavy TV camera that people walked in with. Well, today, all we have to do is reach in our pocket, our phones. Anybody could be a videographer or a recording person, so you, you just want to make sure that you're aware of that.
So the guy coming down from Durham,
Yeah.
with the video camera, get it, gets up and goes to the microphone, is not a resident?
Okay. The next thing I was gonna say is, surprise, public speaking is not required under freedom of information. So who speaks, when they speak, if they speak at all, how long they speak, is entirely up to the board. So if you have a, a rule in place, even, you know, try to be consistent, but, you know, again, I, I keep referring to budget season, but you know, staff wants to speak and you only want to hear from residents, you, you know, that's up to you. You can do that. And so if you want people to identify themselves before they speak and you say, "I'm sorry, we're only listening to residents tonight," you have every right to do that. It's entirely up to you.
We could eliminate public speaking if we wanted?
Yeah, at your own peril. I mean, you know.
Right, no, 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 I'm, I'm just saying, no, I'm just saying, it doesn't have to be.
You come in one night and the issue is one that you've beaten to death and that you've heard from every person in town, it feels like, and someone wants to rehash old arguments and all you're here to do is decide it amongst yourselves. You don't want to hear from them, you want to make that call, you certainly can. Nothing in FOI prohibits that.
So we would, we would have to change our agenda if we didn't? I'm not suggesting we do this, but I'm just trying to.
You have public comment on your agenda. You could just, you could just skip it. You could just skip it. You say, "We're not gonna do it."
Even if it's on the agenda and people came because of it?
Well, you know, again, at your own peril. I'm not recommending that. But for instance, for instance, you've got a hot issue, right? And the room is packed and you have a busy agenda on top of that, you could say, "Okay, folks, just so that it's clear, three minutes." You've got three minutes tonight individually and we're gonna time you. We're not being rude, but we've got a lot of work to do tonight. And, you know, and those, these, these are things that, that a board has the right to do. Whether you want to or not, whether you're comfortable with it, it's entirely up to you, but understand that it's your call. The law isn't dictating to you.
So our policy, we, we don't have to have it, like if we have a, a two-minute time limit in our policy, we could change that, meeting to meeting?
I, I wouldn't. I don't think anything in the law would stop you from doing that. We had a three-minute policy and, and when the room was packed, I said, "Look, folks, we're gonna hold you to it. If you're talking, I'll let you finish the sentence, but that's it." Because sometimes you just have work to do and, and you can't, you just can't get it done if you let people go on and on.
So if we didn't have a time limit in a policy, it could be set meeting by meeting? If, if that's what we so chose to do?
If you chose, based on, based on crowd size and things like that?
Right, right.
If we did have, that we decided on our agenda that we're having public speaking with like a, you know, two, three-minute time limit, if we decide not to, does that need to be a 24-hour notice or can it be as soon as?
No, the thing about an agenda is, it's, this is what you're planning to do, but sometimes items get taken off and if it's public speaking, again, you know your community. I, I suspect that that wouldn't go over very well, but that, you know, that you're not breaking the law if you go down that road. I'm not advocating it, I'm just telling you that you have real control over the public speaking portion.
So, a question, you know, you being a former board member, we have two opportunities to speak during the board meeting. Did you also have?
We didn't, actually.
One?
It was added after I left. But, you know, so, yeah, I, I, and I, by the way, it was more common to just have one and they, you know, that was just circumstantial. Two is fine. The board I'm on now, that I just started up, has two. I mean, it's fine. Because sometimes people like to comment on what you've done after the night is through.
Our first one is limited to agenda items only.
Okay.
At the end, they can speak about whatever.
Again, however you, which, my message is, it's up to you. You're not limited by anything in the FOI act. That's how you do, deal with public speaking. Okay? So, we're making a, making a big point about meetings being open, accessible. And somebody, I think you asked the question about an executive session. Remember, folks, that an executive session is a part of a publicly noticed open meeting. So even if the only item you have is an executive session item, you still need to notice the meeting. The agenda says, "Executive session planned discussion of superintendent's performance." You convene, you know, you say your pledge and you vote to go in. Again, you need a two-thirds vote to go into executive session. You have to state the reason clearly and please don't use things like personnel matter, legal matter, because, you know, attorney-client privileged document. You, you, the law, the, and the courts have really sort of clamped down on this in the recent years. They want more.
More than, more than personnel?
Yeah. Yeah. Now, executive session, discussion of the performance of a school district employee would be fine. It's the superintendent, there's only one of you, so it's kind of hard, you know, to, to mask that, if you will. If it's something that everybody knows about, you might as well put it out there.
In the plan, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I was gonna say, the five reasons for executive session. A personnel matter, pending claims or pending litigation, a security matter, a property transaction. Let's suppose that you're gonna build a new school and you're looking all over town and you're looking for land and you're negotiating with different landowners. You wouldn't have to do that in public. You know, you may not, you know, you may, I, you may be well-stocked, your schools may be great and so, but that's not something you would have to do in public. You'd have to, you know, vote in the end in public, but not... The fifth one is, is something of a catch-all. It allows for the, for conversation about documents or a document that you believe are exempt from disclosure. We haven't talked about documents yet, but you, as you know, there are some that are exempt. So let's suppose, let's suppose that you put out bids for your transportation and you get the bid from Daco and First Student and Durham Services and they're all coming in and you want to look at them. Because those documents are exempt until you've signed a contract, you would go into executive session to look at the contents of those documents because the documents were exempt. You ask your attorney for a written legal opinion. You're the, you're the client. You're covered by the attorney-client privilege. You're not gonna tell the rest of the world what the attorney's advising you. You would go in to look together at what the attorney was advised. Those are just a couple of examples. A lot of times people say, "Well, wait a minute, you're, why are your expulsion hearings..." You don't have any here, I know, but your expulsion hearings, why are they, why are they not in public? Well, because technically, you're talking about student records. And you've got a federal law that covers that, so although you say, when you make the motion, for a student matter, it's really the student records. Technically, student records, which allows you to, to do that behind closed doors.
I have a question on pending claims.
Yeah. Let me, let me get, I'm gonna get to that. Hold the question, because I want to start with personnel.
Okay.
First of all, again, as I said, just executive session personnel, not enough. Executive session, discussion of the performance of a high school teacher, an administrator, something like that. You don't have to necessarily name the individual. The law doesn't require that. But you have to have enough so that people have a pretty good idea of who you're gonna talk about.
So even for leaves of absences or?
If you're gonna talk about him in executive session, yes, yes.
And they have a right to?
The next thing I was gonna say is, if you, you need to tell somebody in advance that you're gonna talk about him or her in executive session. They have the right to come forward and say, "No, I want that discussion to be held in public." And if they do that, you cannot go into executive session. Now, what sometimes happens is, you know what you're gonna talk about and you can talk them maybe off the cliff and say, "Look, why don't, why don't we invite you into the executive session?"
Can we do that?
Because you can invite anybody you want into an executive session to give you evidence, to give you testimony, to help you make a decision. Key point, bring them in, talk to them all you want, you know, take everything you need, but then they have to leave when you start deliberating, okay? And remember, when you're in executive session, do not ever, 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 ever vote. You must come out of executive session to vote. Now, the reality is, as a chairman of a board, you have a pretty good idea where things are gonna go. Or if you're running the meeting as a vice chair, you have a pretty good idea. But don't say, "Okay, can I see a show of hands before we leave the executive session?" Say, "Okay, I think we're done, let's go." And you vote. You have your, your action must take place in public. The minutes need to reflect who voted for what or for whom.
Point of order, do we need to vote to come out of the executive session?
Ironically, no.
We don't, okay.
No. That's not a big deal, but technically, no, because you, you can't vote technically behind closed doors. That's a little silly, but that's, that's what the law says.
And when we get out here, we don't have to vote?
To go back into the session?
To go back into regular session?
No, we do not, no.
Okay.
You just say, you just say, "We're done, we're hung out." Right.
We're pretty much on track. We're not doing too bad.
Yeah, we're doing, we're doing pretty good.
So. The, you know, the personnel executive session, just remember that, now intuitively, you will deal with people who say, "No, I don't want it in public, but I get to be in the room." They and you need to understand that that's not a requirement. You can let them in, but you're not required to.
What, what, all right, so that's personnel.
Pending claims and pending litigation is pretty much what it sounds like. You've been sued, there's a grievance. You're gonna go into executive session to talk about your strategy dealing with that. It also allows you to contemplate taking legal action. Let's suppose your, your bus service is doing a crummy job and you want to sue them. You could have that conversation behind closed doors.
If, if we've been threatened with a suit, but it hasn't appeared yet, maybe? Okay.
If, if there's a written threat of a suit, maybe, but the, "Ooh, gee, we might get sued", you, you have to be real careful with that one. You have to be careful with that one.
Okay, thank you.
The security executive session is one that never used to come up, ever. But sadly, since December of 2012, it's come up a lot, since Sandy Hook. I, I don't even like using that as an example, but it's real. I've gotten a lot of calls from boards of education, can we go into executive session to talk about those extra resource officers, to talk about the new alarm systems, to talk about bulletproof glass and stuff like that, stuff that makes our skin crawl? But the reality is sure, because the people you're trying to keep out don't need to know what extra steps you're taking to take, to keep them out, so that's, that's an example of the security executive session. So, so you, you remember, you have to notice it, you have to vote to go in. You talk as long as you want, there's no time limit, but when you come out, you, you must come out to take whatever action. You could invite people in, take whatever information you want from them and then send them out. Now, the reality is that school boards often bring the superintendent in because they need his or her expertise. Police commissions bring in the police chief, you know, stuff like that. I would not recommend a yo-yo thing. "We need to ask him a question about this, now you leave, now you come back." I don't, I think that's stupid. That, you know, they're, they're, they're part of the team. So, I mean, unless it's his or her evaluation and you want to talk about after they leave, but that's, that's a different story. So, so that's one path. Are there any questions about executive session, how it works, how you should do it?
Is it negotiations part of executive session?
Ah, we're getting there. No, the answer is no.
For security, just going back to that, you can be more generic in your posting. You don't have to say to look at the number of video cameras.
No, to, to talk about security measures for the high school, something like that.
Generic, okay.
Right. And when you vote, when you come out to vote, by the way, we wouldn't expect you to give out the form then.
No.
Mister Chairman, Madam Chairman, I move that we, we take the action that we, that we contemplated in executive session to improve security at the high school and appropriate, you know, a hundred thousand dollars or whatever. You know, I mean, you wouldn't have to, you wouldn't have to detail it.
I was gonna ask, if you had a parent with a complaint that wanted to go into executive session, is that permissible?
Well, it's your call. It would have to be one of the, one of the permitted reasons. Now, if the parent wants to talk about, you know, something on the record of his or her child, then I guess you could say, new student.
I mean, you could end up with all 1,700 parents wanting to.
Then, it's certainly not required.
Wouldn't it go through the superintendent first as a matter of policy?
That's, that's policy, but, you know, a lot of times, parents would jump up at a board meeting and say, "I want to talk about this."
It could be chaos.
I've never heard of this, that, but I would think it would be handled under policy.
I had a, I had one a year or so ago, it was kind of interesting. This board member, this parent was unhappy, a bunch of parents were unhappy about something that the school districts was doing and they stood up and they read letters at the, at the board meeting. Very, very public, you know, "I, so-and-so, I'm a parent," and it was special ed. So-and-so, da-da-da, boom. They all read the letters and they hand them over to the board. A reporter wanted to see the letters and the board felt obligated not to turn them over, even though they had been read in public, citing fervor.
Sure, yeah.
So, you know, you really, you want to remind the parent that if you want to stand up and talk about it, you're, you're waving, you know, rights.
Yeah, it becomes part of.
Absolutely, yeah.
It can be.
Once they write it down, it's on the record.
Right, so. So, in addition to executive session, there's another path that boards can go down to exclude the public. And this is one of those that leaves me banging my head against the wall when I try to explain it. We, open meeting, open meeting, open meeting. I read you the definition of meeting. The next sentence says... The next sentence says, "Meeting does not include." Meeting does not include. There follows a list of stuff, many of which everybody in this room would call a meeting. And the legislature said, "Fine, you can call it a meeting if you want, for the purposes of freedom of information, it's not a meeting." And at the top of the list is collective bargaining. So your collective bargaining strategy sessions, your collective bargaining, uh, negotiating sessions, not meetings. So that means they're not noticed, they're not open, and they're not, there are no minutes when you're done. They're not an executive session issue.
But we're doing that, but...
They are not meetings.
But like, but during a, during a regular budget meeting, if, um, like Don Wenicki wants to update the board on where he is with certain groups...
As far as like, you know, what...
During the negotiation process.
Non-specific. I've come to a agreement with the cafeteria work here, so...
Hasn't been ratified yet, or, you know, this is, this is what we're looking at.
Can, can we do that in executive session?
My, my advice would be that you probably have a tentative agreement, you have a draft of some kind, and drafts are exempt from disclosure, so you would go into executive session to talk about the draft contract with whatever bargain.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
That's, that's how, that's how I would do that. But technically, the, the negotiating part, and you know, I found that, some of, I don't know if you guys have heard this term, the term that's making the rounds in Connecticut is the non-meeting, has anybody ever heard that?
Yeah, what, what is a non-meeting?
Well, it's not in the law, first of all, and it's these things that I'm talking about, that meeting does not include, the non-meeting, and one of those is negotiations. And I sense that you've done some, have you all done some of these negotiations? It's, it's as much fun as you've ever had in your life, right? You're sitting at a table and you sit down and they give you a proposal and you laugh, and then you counter and they laugh, and you're back and forth and you're out of the room and you're negotiating immediately, blah, 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 you're there all night. And you get nothing, you don't think you get anywhere, right? So after four hours, you go home and you tell your spouse that you've just spent four hours at a non-meeting? How do you think that flies? So, but that's the term, but the, the point is, it's not a meeting for the purposes of FOI, so, so salary, so those, those collective bargaining sessions are not meetings. Executive level search committees, you're ready to retire to Myrtle Beach, play some golf, swim, the whole thing, and you wanna look for a new, you wanna look for a new superintendent, you form an executive level search committee. An executive level search committee can operate outside of freedom of information, not noticed, not open, no minutes. Now, that one, if you think about it, makes some sense, you're looking for the best possible replacement, uh, even though the shoes are impossible to fill, you're, you're looking for the best possible replacement, so, you're gonna get applications from people who are already employed, and they don't want their current employers to know it, so that one makes some sense. You could do all that behind closed doors until you bring out, you know, your final candidate.
So they can't FOI, you know, after, after, you know, look at New Haven right now, they, they had to search for the, the new superintendent and all.
We're in the middle of that one, too, yeah.
People could not, um, FOI all of the applicants?
That's correct.
Resumes and letters and all.
Because, that was the beef, is that the search committee was withholding critical information, I would share, that, um, certain groups, and then they wanted, well, let's see what the search committee...
Once they bring it out, now, I, I'm not familiar with the particulars, I don't wanna put my foot in my mouth.
Right.
The search committee should hold on dearly and tightly to all that stuff. Traditionally, search committees usually bring out two or three finalists, so all their information would come out. But if the search committee starts sharing the things that they are allowed to withhold with other people, they've got a problem. It's that they lose that confidentiality and that's a problem.
Right.
So if you're on a search committee, take it all, you know, go through your resumes, call through them, come down to, you know, a certain number, and then, and then that all stays with you and no one ever sees that. If you bring finalists out to bring them to the PTAs, to bring them to the schools, things like that, then their information comes out. Obviously, the, the eventual choice, that comes out as well. You know, I, I made a joke before about going out to dinner and stuff like that, chance meetings, social gatherings, not a problem, but there's a, there's a phrase in here that you'll get a chuckle out of, neither planned nor intended for the purpose of discussing matters relating to official business. If you all went out to dinner, pray tell, what else would you talk about, right? So here's what, here's my advice, let's not be naive, let's not think that these conversations don't happen. I always maintain that the best meetings in Connecticut take place in the parking lot after the meeting.
I was gonna ask you that.
You know, so I'm sitting in the chair and people, people come up afterwards and the rest of you, and I'd go out into the parking lot and my members are like in little clusters and then they'd scatter like mice when they saw me coming, because I told them, you know, "You can't do that." You're gonna talk, you're gonna have conversations, but folks, avoid the deliberative conversations that you should be having here at the table. That's my advice. Don't leave yourselves vulnerable for complaint that you decided your budget or your, or something critical out in the parking lot, or, or over the eggnog at the Christmas party, you know? Be smart about it. Be smarter, beloved, and, and to that end, we'll go back to the phrase that said, whether in person or by means of electronic equipment. That was written for telephones, when the powerful chair got on the phone and said, "You're voting this way, you're voting that way," bing bang boom, and you had the meeting on the phone before the meeting took place, you cannot have a serial meeting. The law is very clear, crystal clear about that, you can't call and ask people what they think and then say, "Okay, we just decided." And in, and in 2017, we're talking about a lot more than telephones. The emailing, the texting, the Twitter and all that stuff, that's how we communicate today. You know, I'll, I'll talk to one of my daughters and I'll say, "Gee, I haven't talked to you in, in, in weeks," and she said, "I just talked to you yesterday," I said, "I didn't hear your voice." You know, but you, you know what I'm saying, so, and that's how we communicate, and I'm not saying, don't say, "What did I miss at the last meeting?" Or, "What's gonna be on the agenda?" Or, "Can I bring this up?" You know, that sort of thing, or, that, let's, let's not be crazy about it, but if you start having a conversation, if you send out an email to everybody and say, "What do you guys think about this?" And everybody responds, that's a meeting. You gotta be really careful.
What about a caucus? So you, you, you get together by party and you're...
In that category of things that are not a meeting is the caucus. Same board, same party. Same board, same party only, so if they include you, they're not in the caucus forum.
No, right.
So...
Well, suppose...
And it doesn't matter the number of that, right?
No, it does not.
Suppose, there's, there are two caucuses then, suppose they caucus and the Republicans' caucus, and then two, a Democrat and a Republican shared what was discussed, you can't do that.
Then you're in the meeting round, then you've got a problem.
Okay.
Same board, same party, yes.
So I have a question, um, with like the talking to somebody, what happens if you're reading like the agenda and you don't understand it? Do I have...
That's what I mean, let's not, that's what I mean, let's not get crazy.
So that's okay?
You call the chair and you say, "What the hell does this mean?"
What does this mean, I don't understand this.
Ask the questions, be informed, and, and, you know, don't make yourself nuts, just, "Ooh, I can't talk," no, that's not exactly true. But no, it's, there are some people who say, "No, you're, well, I suppose, hyper-technically, but let's, we gotta get business done, we've gotta do our work." But if you don't, if you don't understand something, you have a right to ask the next question.
What about texting people and reminding them of meetings and all?
Not a problem.
So, with caucus, then you're not subject to disclosure of information?
Caucus is in that category of things that are not a meeting. Caucus isn't a meeting, right.
But you can't, for purposes of transparency, share with the other side or what went on?
That's correct.
Right.
So two people could not have a conversation?
That, what I'm saying is, you know, those conversations are gonna take place probably daily, you wanna be real careful the depth to which you go into those conversations and understand that if the wrong person's standing next to you in the produce aisle of the grocery store, they could say they were having an illegal meeting. You just wanna be careful to the extent to which you discuss board business, not here at the table.
So I have a question.
Yes.
I tried raising my hand, it wasn't working. Oh my God, I think I forgot my question. Oh, email correspondence, just, um, I know that email correspondence is considered a meeting in some states.
Yes.
Um, is there a start of any email that correspondence that's okay? I know once a person starts responding, it's considered a meeting, from my training in a different state, so I try very hard not to respond, I try not to take...
Okay, but if, but if, but if the chairman sends you an email and says, "Do you still want this on the agenda?"
Yeah, I'm talking about maybe just, I don't know, I'm just wondering.
But if the chairman sends you an email, or, or, or someone who's not of your party sends you an email and says, "I just heard that this happened at the high school, this is outrageous, we need to do something about this," and you respond and say, "I agree, here's what I think we should do," that's a problem.
All right, so, this is one email I was gonna send out tomorrow, I was going to, and maybe I can't, I was gonna poll members to see if they wanted to continue to have food at the budget meeting or not, because a lot of it is going uneaten and, so is that...
Call me, I'll come to know.
Would that be...
No, I would say, I would, I would argue that that's probably goes into the sort of the category of talking about the agenda and what's gonna happen.
So that would be an okay type, so to ask?
Yeah, I mean, again, let's...
Well, can the email start with...
Good question, Tom, I wanna spin off of, so, I send information out to all board members.
Right.
A high school student went to the ambulance, went by ambulance today for an injury at the high school. Board member emails, now I'm just saying, a board member emails back saying, "Oh my gosh, what happened, is the student okay?"
Not, that's, because it's with you, it's not a problem, but if a board member then says, "I just heard from Scott and, and the student got hurt at the, at the high school," and that's because it's unsafe, what do you think about that?
Right.
And starts talking to a board member about that, or, "I don't think staff handled it properly, what do you think about that?" That's when it starts to be a problem. The dissemination of information via those vehicles is not a problem. So if you have something you wanna share with everybody, you could certainly send it out.
Well, our law is required, anything that comes to the chair gets disseminated to everyone, so when I get stuff, I just send it out.
But that's information, I think the difference is, once everybody starts pigging back off their opinion and stuff, that's when it's the, the first email's okay.
And let's suppose, let's, let's take it one step further. Let's suppose, let's suppose you come up with something that you really wanna share with everybody, that's your opinion. Look, folks, I know we've got a difficult subject, but I want you all to know, when we go to that meeting tomorrow night, this is how I feel. And you articulate it, this is what you, what you think about this particular issue. Not a problem, but when Diane writes back and says, "That's the dumbest thing I've ever heard," then you start the...
I wouldn't be the one.
Then you start the conversation that you should be having here at the table, okay?
And, and so what if somebody, like, I've been here for a while, I've been here on the board, what if a new member says to me, you know, "This is on the agenda and, you know, do you have any his, like, you, you were on..."
Again, I would argue not a problem. You're explaining something, you're giving somebody information.
Okay.
But if it's, "This is on the agenda and I think this is dumb, what do you think about that?" And you start having the dialogue that you should be having at the meeting, that's where you wanna draw the line.
So if we're talking about ECA placements and I say, "Gee, I think we should only fund eight," and Carolyn says, "No, I think we need ten," and...
That, that, you don't wanna do that, you don't wanna do that.
I think the only way we could do that would be the first email saying, "How many students are placed in different districts?" And then that's it.
Yeah, and you can't respond.
So the information email, the first one's one thing, but once we start chiming in, it runs a meeting.
Or, folks, just as a starting point, you need to know that I think we need to place ten, and it stops there, that's probably okay, too, but when you write back and say six, and you write back and say four, you know, that, that's...
So the moral of the story is, don't respond to Sarah.
Right, right, don't respond, just, don't even say thank you, I would just send it to you.
You can say thanks, it's all... Okay.
Right, I think you're the only one that's gonna...
The last thing we should talk about with meetings is minutes.
Mary does a wonderful job.
She does.
Here's what you need to know, first of all, I feel your pain, I do the minutes for the FOI commission, I get it, here's what you need to know, minutes need not be the recreation of war and peace. They are not every word that everybody says. A lot of times you get people get up and they'll say, "I want this in the minutes, I want that in the minutes, blah, 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 blah." Well, you can do it if you want, but you, there's, the absolutely only legal requirement for minutes is a record of who votes for what or for whom. Now, you're creating the historical record for the school board, you want more than that in there, but how much more really is in your hands, and in your hands? So if you find that the minutes are getting too complicated or too long, or there's too much, you know, palaver in there, then you can cut them back and come up with something you're comfortable with. I recommend a crisp, clear, concise recapitulation of what happened at the meeting, so that when I pick the minutes up, a month from now, a week from now, a year from now, whatever it is, I know what happened, but I don't need to read every word that everybody says. There's a, there's a school board in the northeast corner, God bless them, that their minutes are, are basically a verbatim transcript, and they call from time to time, and, and I, I, I feel like a poor woman is, you know, ready to just go jump off the top of the highest building, "Well, they, they didn't like the comma there and the semicolon there," and what happens is, "I didn't say that," or, "I didn't really mean to say that," or, "Could we change that 'cause that's not what I really meant?" And then you get all sorts of problems, so you wanna, you wanna just...
And we video our meetings, our, are recorded, they're, they're publicized on, on local TV, so we have access to watch them again.
Right.
With frequency.
Right.
So less is more.
Less is more, correct.
Unless you're neurotic like me. I, and it, just, 'cause I do other commissions and boards, and I try to appease to what people like.
Right, it's, it's the board's ball ultimately, yeah, I just don't know what you're required to do.
I, I have another question about, I don't think it's really minutes, it's more meeting, but I noticed that many, when I look at, um, websites for other towns, I noticed that many of those towns submit their monthly budget report and have it filed on the record at the regular meeting, and we never do that, is that something we need to do?
Not, not required, that's, you, if you decide you need to do it, that's fine, but it's not required under, under law, yeah.
So can I ask a quick question about...
Can we let her ask a question? Yeah, okay, yes, yes, of course.
Only because it, it did happen, so, some, a parent gets up and speaks similarly to what you said, and then they say on camera, "For the record, I'd like to submit my documents." So they bring them over here and they submit them, but, there's a but. So then everybody goes out in the executive session and the person returns and said, "I changed my mind." Now the camera's off and they go take it back, so I...
I would argue that once they, once it crosses the threshold, it becomes a public record that you would have to maintain. That's what I would say.
All right. We're not going to worry about that right now.
Yeah, but if it happened the other way, I wouldn't worry about it either. Nobody's going to arrest you for it.
Yeah, but, but the point is that she's left here by herself. You know, she's left here by herself to say to this person who's irate that-
So do we take Mary with us and have her go and Scott's room sometimes?
I think we should take the materials. I think we should take the materials.
If somebody moves, if that happens again, if that happens again, my suggestion would be-
Take them with them.
Yes, my suggestion would be, once they do that and you hand it over to them-
Or they could take them places.
Yeah, because that leaves Mary in a very precarious position and that's unfair.
So my worry was, when people are watching and they see the person saying, "For the record", they put them down and then they want to see them and all of a sudden, what happens to them? So it's my word against the person.
Yeah, puts you in a very dangerous place.
Yeah, that's- But it, we have an issue of using the TV for one-way communication, so there was a purpose for that, but-
But then the TV was off.
No, no, that's-
That's the point, right.
Right, no, that was calculated. That was totally calculated.
And just, you know, I should have brought this up before we hit minutes. You know, put your phones away at the meeting. People can, especially if it's on television, ooh, so-and-so was watching on TV and was coaching them as to what to say and what to do because you may be just telling your husband to get milk or, you know, telling your kids to do their homework. I frankly had a woman on the board, she drove me crazy, she would not put her phone away. Technically, you could be accused of having an improper meeting. You could be talking to another board, you know, it just-
Sending information.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think any of us do that.
Yeah.
No, I think we need to sit in time and-
But it's the assumption that if somebody sees you on your phone, they're assuming the worst.
So just, you know, again, that's just an aside.
What about the cell phones in executive session? Is that something that's permissible or-
Again, I don't-
We should be professional enough. I think we should be professional enough to that.
Yeah, you don't, you don't really, you don't want, maybe to check the time or something. And remember, folks, with the minutes, you need to be available in seven days. I'm sure you're aware of that, right?
Even the subcommittees.
Okay, and then you're all set. And now of subcommittee meetings, people say, "Oh, my God, you mean to tell me the subcommittees have to be..." Yeah, but remember, not War and Peace. The curriculum subcommittee met, members A, B, C, and D were there. They discussed the eighth grade math curriculum. No actual mistake and period, end of story. You don't have to go on and on and on. Just make sure there's a record of it.
Do most activities have been submitted sooner than the seven-day-
There has to be a record of the votes available in 48 hours. It doesn't have to be any kind of a formal document, but if I come into, you know, central office and I, in 48 hours, I should be able to find out how the board voted.
Now, we do, we do not approve subcommittee minutes.
Not required, not required, no.
Actually, not too bad.
No, we're in pretty good shape.
Are there, we keep questions about, about meeting issues. I want to talk to you just a little bit about records. Most of the records issues will go through staff, but I just want to give you a little bit about records so that you have a basic idea. Any other questions about meetings or the conduct of meetings or anything like that? Okay, so as I said in the beginning, it's about access to meetings and access to records. What you need to sort of comprehend is that every record held by every public agency in the state of Connecticut is defined as a public record. And in theory, anybody can walk in and ask to see a copy or can make a request for a copy. When you read the definitions, it spells it out. Doesn't matter what the form is, it's a public record. Now, on top of that base concept, we have exemptions, we have exclusions, we have exceptions to disclosure. So you're saying to yourself, "Well, why tell us everything's a public record"? Because sometimes people who do what we do sort of flip it around. It's a North Branford Board Record, you can't have it. You're from another town, you can't have it. Or you look like a nice person, you can have it, but you look very dangerous. We're not going to give it to you and you've been here too much, you're out of here. You know, we tend to get possessive, we tend to get selective and you can't do that. You have to start with the concept that everything's a public record and then look at the idea that it might be exempt. Now, we mentioned FERPA before. That's a huge exception to disclosure. When you read the definition, it says, "Except as otherwise provided by any federal law or state statute, all records, blah, blah, blah." Well, that's a state, federal law that says you can't give out records that personally identify kids. Many people come to school boards, come to central offices and ask for records that they're absolutely sure they're going to get. Surprised, they can't get them. We've just upped the case and we've rendered a decision, so I can talk to you about it. There was a situation in Darien last fall where a coach slapped a player on the side of the helmet. Now, just as an aside, I don't think it's that big of a deal, but anyway, you know. But, but the coach got in trouble and, you know, I used to be a sports writer and so I've seen what teams from this town used to do to people, so, you know, you know, when you were a powerhouse, people just, anyway. Things are different now. So the kid got, and so this one parent, not of the kid who got slapped, wanted to find out stuff. And he was, and the teacher got, the coach was suspended and all that. And he was frustrated in his inability to get records. Now, everybody knew who the kid who got slapped was. He's wearing his number. Everybody knew who he was. It was all over town. But when he wanted to see a video, there was a video from a security camera that just happened to be near the field and he wanted to see the records, he was told no because of FERPA. And he filed a complaint with us, but in the strictest reading of FERPA, he can't have it. I mean, that's a law that pretty much locks it down. It says that if it identifies a student, you can't get it out, even though everybody in town knew who the student was. So he couldn't get it. So that's, but you can't automatically assume that it's a record like that. If a teacher was disciplined, it had to be redacted so that the identity of the kid wasn't released and... So I'm going to, I'm going to share with you-
Can I just spin on that? Because, you know, we're in an age where there's video cameras, you know, throughout our buildings and so Johnny has something he shouldn't have and he's disciplined and the administrative team goes back and looks at the file and looks at the video and calls the parent and says, "Hey, Johnny's been suspended for having whatever." Parent says, "I want to see that video."
The parent has different FERPA rights.
Of their child.
Of their own child.
Okay.
But now, if there's two kids involved, you might have a problem. You might not be able to fuzz out the face of the other kid again if they, if they all know it. A parent can waive FERPA, you know, those things. But so again, you have to be, you have to be vigilant. We've got another one that hasn't been heard yet. A woman, she sounded, she sounded reasonable. Her child and another child were out in the, not the playground, but sort of a common area at the high school and they were doing something that they shouldn't have done and there's a video of it. And, I mean, everybody knows who the two kids are, but the school district is reluctant to give up the video because it's not just her son, there's another kid in the video. But, but back to the idea of public records, just to share with you a little. You probably have requesters that you deal with on a regular basis, some of whom appear frequently.
That was my question.
We all have, we all have them. We do not have a burdensome exemption. We do not have an onerous exemption. I will be candid with you, there is a need for that. We are working with the legislature to try to find the balance, but don't forget, we're about openness and so we were always hesitant to take away, but, you know, we feel your pain. We had one guy who between the end of 2011 and 2016 filed 450 complaints against various agencies around the state, to the point where we stopped hearing them. But even when he came in and asked for records, even though everybody wanted to either run or slug him or one of the, you know, we had to treat him the same way. The law was created at a time when it wanted a big tent and people did not use this law as a weapon as some do today. We don't encourage that, we discourage that, we try to stop that. But there's nothing that says you can only ask for 10, you can't ask for 20. You know, that shit's just nothing there.
Let me spin off of that. So with, with the numerous requests for information and obviously the time and the resources and the copy fees and I get all of that, running it through our attorney is costly. If we have questions, we forward things up. Are you available to screen?
At all times.
Okay, so-
It's not, it's not a legal opinion, but if you have a simple question-
If I say, Tom, I've got six things on the list here, what should I give?
That's why we tell you to call. And you may not agree. We may tell you and you say, "Okay, to heck with him, we're going to do something else."
Well, it's going to come back to you anyway.
Right.
I have a question too, because one of our frequent FOI-
Files, we call them frequent files.
All right. We'll ask for information or ask questions and my interpretation was we have to present what we have, but not create documents or anything.
What I was going to say is you're never required to create a record you don't have.
Right.
Again, back to the beginning, you're not required to answer questions. You don't have to do research for anybody. A lot of times these requests, these sort of mountainous requests are research and you're not required to do that.
We only have to provide existing documents.
Provide an existing document, you don't have to create something. Now, if you choose to create it, you've not created a public record. Sometimes it's easier to create the record just to get somebody out of your hair, but that's your call.
Is that precedent setting if you create records and then you set it?
No, you create it in one instance and not in another. No, it is not. It's all fact-specific to the specific incident. So I'm, yeah, go ahead.
We don't have to answer if, if the person doing these requests starts probing or asking questions. There is no responsibility-
No responsibility under FOI. Now, again, we're public servants, so you have to determine how far you're going to go, but there's no requirement under FOI.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
So the story, the little story about everything being a public record and ignoring the fact that it's somebody you don't like? I mean, these people, you like them, right? I get it. I mean, believe me, we try really hard. We have dozens of them that darken our doorstep at all times, but they have the same rights. So here's a story out of Hartford a couple of years ago. The requestor is, we'll call him a quasi-journalist. He does a blog, he does a public access TV thing. He's around a lot. He's asking a lot of stuff and, you know, they don't like him. They've reached the point where they don't like him, although frankly, he is not obnoxious as some of the ones that we deal with are. So in this case, he asks the city of Hartford for two things. He asks the city for a record of bills, bills submitted by a law firm doing work for the city and then a record of payment from the city to that law firm. And the corporation counsel, the attorney for the city of Hartford responds, "I have your FOI request and will coordinate the response. Such documentation as is allowed or required by law will be provided." Now, when you get a request for records, you need to have a response minimum within four business days. And I think you probably know that. Somebody's, always respond up. It doesn't necessarily mean produce the records, but it means respond. "We've got it, we're looking into it." Because if you don't, the law says you've denied that request and they can file a complaint for non-compliance. So this is a four-day response. It's okay, we got it, we're looking into it. I would also recommend putting a timeframe on it so that the person's not calling every five minutes. It'll take us a day, a week, a month, some ideas to what it is. So why am I reading you this? Because in the process of responding to this guy whom he does not like, the corporation counsel in the city of Hartford, the attorney for the city of Hartford, accidentally copies the guy on an email he had written to somebody else about how much he doesn't like her. To my point about everything becoming a public record. Now, this is one that might not have ever seen the light of day had he not hit the wrong button, but, you know, we dinosaurs can do that. It's not very sudden, right? So now in the hands of the requestor, a journalist is the following. And we're being recorded, so I'll clean it up, but you'll get the idea. Carl, so who lit a fire under this? It's a bad word that starts with an A. If he's involved in litigation, ongoing or other projects that he hasn't asked about, can I shut him down? So his response isn't really, "Thanks for your request, I'm looking into it", it's, "How do I get rid of you"? And now it's in the hands of the journalist. So bang, it goes on his blog, it goes on his public access TV thing and he's connected. It's on FSB at 6:00. It's in the current the next morning and Hartford looks really bad. So Hartford says, "Hmm, that's not good. We need to do something about that." He can't really see it clearly, but that is city of Hartford letterhead. City of Hartford letterhead. He tries to write, he tries to back off, but he can't do it. He doesn't like this guy. He's so consumed with the guy and not, that it's a simple records request. So in his letter of apology is the following. "Apparently you have little else to do other than to pester me in this office and other city departments. Recall that I do not work for you. The purpose of the FOIA statute is not to provide you a playground." Folks, even if you think that, please do not write it because now you've got a second public record saying, "I don't like you, I don't like your law and I don't, you know." There's no point to that. It might feel good if you want to write it and then tear it up maybe, but, but don't do it because... And then that one made the rounds too, FSB, the car, the whole thing. And the part of this that makes me angry is, I guess, is that he never bothered to look at what he was asking for. He said, "It's him, I don't like him, he's getting nothing." And the next headline you see is Hartford loses that FOI commission because the guy filed a complaint. None of the records were exempt and they, and they lost. If you get requests, even from people you have difficulty with, focus. Focus on what's being sought, whether it's exempt or not, and then deal accordingly. Do not get wrapped up in who's making the request. Do not get wrapped up in even the volume of the request. Now, you get these large requests. A lot of people make those requests because they honestly don't know what they're after. They legitimately don't know what they're after, so they throw it all at the ball. A conversation is a really good idea. We always recommend a conversation. See if you can get them to narrow the scope of the request. You'd be surprised how often that works. It doesn't work that way all the time, but it does work because people are actually appreciative. It's going to take you less time to get the records. They'll find out what they need to know that much more quickly and it'll cost them less money because even though it's only 50 cents a page when you're asking for a lot of stuff and you tell them it's going to cost them 375 bucks and you get your money upfront. If it costs more than 10 bucks, you get your money upfront. They're going to maybe not want to do it and you're going to maybe have that conversation. People say, "Okay, that works a lot of times, but what happens when it doesn't? What's our recourse"? The only recourse, well, you do have recourse. And it's that people think that a request under FOI is for immediate access and it's not. The law talks about prompt access. Now, people will think that they have a right to it immediately and if it's the agenda that's sitting on your desk, then it is immediate. Let's not, it doesn't take four days to hand somebody an agenda. But if you've got to go looking for records and you have to have, you review them or call me or call an attorney to look at it and make sure you're not, you know, releasing something you shouldn't, then that could take some time. And prompt access does not mean that you shut your office down and you bring everything to a screeching grinding hall because somebody asked for records. "I need them, I need them now." Well, we have a school district to run. I had a call a couple of years ago from Bethel and they have one of those who was, who walked in on opening day of school and he was looking for like travel vouchers from the superintendent from five years previously. And you know, the first day of school, the buses, "Oh, the buses are there, the people, kids are, oh, yeah." And they said to him, "Sorry, you're going to have to wait." In this case, prompt is not today. And he filed a complaint and we told them to take a hike. I mean, their first obligation was to make sure all the kids got home and that the bus routes were correct. You know, I mean, I'm not telling you something you don't know. So prompt access, prompt means, bless the courts. The courts have said, "We've got your back on this. Prompt means without undue delay." I would like someone to tell me, "You've got two weeks, you've got three weeks", but on the other hand, by telling me without undue delay, there's a tremendous amount to be interpreted. You know what's going on. You knew that day, that Bethel superintendent knew that it was the first day of school and you know that somebody's out sick and you know that, you know, it's the pep rally day in the high schools, but, you know, you know that stuff. And that, and that's how you frame your response. It's, you know, doesn't mean you discard it. It means that it's still important. Access is important, but not at the expense of everything else you have to do.
Suppose, suppose you're extremely shorthanded in the office because one of your key people has left and someone else is out on leave. Is that an excuse to put off?
Let's not call it an excuse. That goes into the formula for deciding how long it's going to take. Yes, it's legitimate. It doesn't mean it's put off indefinitely, but that's clearly a reason-
So you have to hire people to come in and-
Here's what I will tell you. Right now, as we sit here, there are at least four large entities that are in that mode. The state police, the Department of Economic Development on the state level, the city of Hartford Police Department, the city of Hartford Board of Education. They're crying, probably legitimately, that they're understaffed and that their FOI requests have buried them. But they're reaching the point where that's, that they got to come up with a better, a better solution because it's taking way too long. They're telling someone that it's going to take a year to get a police report, that's, that's a problem. And we would argue that perhaps the commissioner would want to look at staffing and so, within reason. But, but yeah, and right now, none of them have been, oh, none of them have been punished or penalized for not being prompted. But that, that moment of reckoning may be coming because it's taking way too long. So within reason, yes, not a problem.
All right, thank you.
Sure. Let me just, we could spend hours talking about the different exemptions and stuff like that. Not going to do that. Figure you know a lot of them. If not, you know who to call. Again, when you guys get requests, but I can't emphasize enough that it's everything. So if you email each other and you say, "Well, I was on my own laptop, so it's not a problem", if it has to do with school board business and somebody wants it, you'd have to produce it. Don't ever forget, it doesn't matter what device it is, you'd have to produce it. That doesn't mean I get to come and grab your phone or your laptop, but it means if you've got something on there and someone wants it and it's not exempt, you'd have to turn it over.
What about texts? Because if I have a record with-
Yes, they're public records, but the reality is they usually disappear pretty quickly. You want to hear a text story? Here's a text story. Over in Putnam, the other side of the state, the, well, it's sort of a text story. The mayor won the largest pumpkin growing contest, right? He's very excited and, let me see your cellphone, just for a second. So he's very excited and he's walking around and he's showing everybody in the office the picture of the pumpkin, him and the pumpkin like this. He doesn't get along with his administrative assistant. Not, not, so, well, all right, I'll let her see it. So he answers the phone, she looks at the picture and then she goes like this. And the next thing she sees, the very next thing she sees is an email exchange between the mayor and other council members about town business, but primarily about her being basically a tramp. Having an affair with another member of the council. I can't make it up, it's true. So she sees this and she is rightfully horrified, right? And she demands to see these texts, these emails. And his first response is, "Oh, no, it's my phone. It had to do with town business." And then it turned out it was his town-owned phone, so he had no leg to stand on. And they fought it, but, but the attorney who was fighting it for him made it very clear to me that, I was the mediator in that case, and he made it very clear that he knew he wasn't going to win because it was right there and she had seen it. So it was, it was still there, they couldn't delete it, is my point. Let me just talk to you for one minute about one level of files that, other than FERPA, that comes up a lot for every public agency. Even things that are in personnel files are public records. People think, "Well, it's a personnel file", especially if you come from the private sector to the public sector, it's a public record. Now, you can withhold things in a personnel file if you believe that releasing them would be an invasion of the person's privacy. That standard comes to us from a 1993 state Supreme Court case. That standard comes to us from a 1993 state Supreme Court case. It's called the Perkins Decision. It actually involved a teacher who objected to the release of her attendance records. And the Supreme Court, it went all the way to the Supreme Court, the Supreme Court said that the attendance records of all of us who work in the public sector are public, period, end of story, the public has a right to know when we're at work. And then it said, "To have been an invasion of this woman's privacy, the release of those records would have to have been both highly offensive and not a matter of public concern." Not either or, but both. And when you get a request for something in a personnel file, you look at it and say, "Would releasing this be highly offensive and not a matter of public concern?" If you believe that it would, then you go to the individual and say, "We've got a request for this in your personnel file, what do you think?" The person says, "I don't care," then you give it out. If the person says, "Yeah, that's an invasion of my privacy," then you can't get it, you give it out under any circumstances, unless the quester makes a complaint to the FOI commission, and the commission looks at the record, which it does behind closed doors, and says, "Sorry, North Branford, you were wrong, not an invasion of privacy, give it out."
Now, I always thought that the teachers' files were not privy to FOI, but this is...
Teacher evaluations, teacher evaluations by state statute. Somebody had a...
Disciplined.
10-1, 10-151C.
Oh, yeah, they accept FOI all the time.
And things that are not evaluative are released, disciplinary records must be released, things like that. If they're evaluative, and, and I will be candid with you, there have been cases when people wanted to see things that were disciplinary, and districts tried to make them evaluative, and we said, "No, no, it's not evaluative, it's disciplinary."
It's disciplinary, you can...
Yes.
Okay.
So, were there any other records that you wanted to ask about specifically, or anything like that?
I, I think...
I think you were really clear.
Yeah, it was, it was very comprehensive and helpful.
Okay. Anything about anything else?